Keep us on track. Apparently, they're not paying any attention to me, so. Sonny's in place, Renee's in place, the chief's in place. Okay, Mr. Rex, I guess you're gonna have to speak over the the talking.
All right, so we've, the next section is really project briefings. This is where we just kind of update you real briefly on some of the different projects going on. We're gonna start with an update on our code compliance efforts first, so Robert Lay's gonna handle that. And then, there's a couple other projects I'm gonna update y'all on, so, Robert, it's all yours.
Mr. Lay, you're up.
All right. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna use the microphone, so Amy doesn't tell me I'm loud. Okay. So, a lot of the information I'll give you, we've, we've talked a lot about code over the past few months, so maybe just a little bit different way of looking at it, some of these things. And if y'all got questions through this, be happy to answer them for you too, for sure. First slide here is just a comparison of code activity for the past, well, there's four years on here, 2016 through 2019. Just kinda showing the trend overall, or the violations were increasing. But I don't believe that to be because there's more violations out there than ever before. In late 2017 is when we added an additional code enforcement officer. So, that should, that would push the numbers up. And then, the big jump you'll see on most of those was in 2019. We had, we had big jumps in, in vehicle violations, we had big jumps in yard condition violations. And in 2019 is when we added an admin support person, which allowed the code officers to spend more time in the field, because they weren't having to do their own, all their own paperwork anymore. So, that definitely pushed those, pushed those totals up. Our biggest violation, obviously, every year is just trying to get people to mow their grass. I mean, and we've taken, you know, we implemented a different or a higher admin fee on that to see if that would make a difference, trying to leverage some people to, to do their own yard work. We'll see, that didn't kick in till last year, so we still need a little bit more data to know if that makes a difference. So, we'll probably next year have some more of that to look at. So, this year currently, this is what the totals look like. So, in March and April, the code officers really slowed down most of their work. Didn't want to initiate a lot of things during the, I guess, the height of people's fear of going outside and doing those things. So, we really slowed down, pushed our totals down for the year, or year-to-date, lower than, you know, where they would've been. But that's been, we've got that cranked back up now. This is a comparison of just annual cases since 2016. I can tell you, I looked back also from 20, at 2013, 14, and 15. And it was consistently 4,500 or thereabouts from 2013 to 2017. And then, 2018 is the first year we added the additional code enforcement officer. So, you saw the totals jump a little bit there. And then, last year, 2019, you see the totals jumped a lot. That was the additional code officer, plus getting the admin support, which made a difference. But I've always said, you know, these numbers are great, you know? I mean, we live in a numbers-driven world, but I want to get this city to a place where these numbers are decreasing, but only because the violations don't exist. I would love to have a day where they're driving around looking hard for something to find. Right now, they don't have that problem, but one day, I hope they do, and these numbers will trend down for the right reasons eventually. So, our minimum property standards is probably our biggest initiative right now. We talk a lot about housing and improving housing as part of our neighborhood revitalization efforts. I'm busy with y'all at council on June about this, kind of an update that our focuses are gonna be in the areas that are being redeveloped, getting into the interior parts of some of our neighborhoods proactively. We've identified 100 houses initially to go out and do proactive MPS work on. They've started that now, and we will always continue to work high-visibility areas and keep work going in our downtown area as well. So, wanted to show you some recent minimum property standards successes that we had. We always like to see the successes for sure. So, this is 2,900 West Crawford. This is straight across that picture, is looking out of the parking lot of B McDaniel Middle School. So, think about the volume of people during the school year that see this property. And now, they get to look across there, of course, the property owner there went way above and beyond the scope of work that they needed to do to be at minimum standards. So, it looks really good if you go by there. 113 West Morton Street, again, a, another success story there in a high-visibility area. This is 309 North Armstrong, house looks like it probably should belong in a beach town, but hey, it looks good. I mean, especially compared to what was there before, so we're pleased with that. And this is 1331 West Morton, and a commercial building there. And they, again, they went way above and beyond what, what they had to do to meet minimum property standards. But again, on a super-high-visibility area, and if you see what it looked like before and you drove by now, it looks like a totally different building. So, we've got a lot of people investing a lot of money in the community, so that's a great thing. So, our demolition activity for the past 10 years, you know, we're, if you add those up, it's, we're getting close to 500 total over the past 10 years. The highest number was back in 2012, we had 70. And then, last year, we were, we had a lower number last year that, there was some things that contributed to that, causing that to be lower. We're up a little bit more this year. But I think the thing to understand going forward is the trend with that, I believe, is gonna go down as far as the number of demolitions we do. We don't have the low-hanging fruit that we used to. We have really done a good job of taking those down now. And where before, especially 10 years ago, there was a dilapidated house on every corner in a lot of neighborhoods, they don't exist anymore. So, a lot of the ones now are gonna be just here and there. I expect us to do some every year, but it's, we're not, the days of hitting 30, 35 a year, I believe, are over. So, that just brings it back to the importance of when we're looking at improving our neighborhoods, of that minimum property standards effort, and being the most important thing that, you know, code can contribute to revitalizing those areas. So, we're gonna really be pushing that, you know, this year, and probably for the next few as well. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, Judd, the money that we were using to demolish homes, can that money be used? If, if, if the low-hanging fruit is not there, can that money be used in other areas to, to support revitalization?
It, I guess in a roundabout way it is. So, our demolition, our demolition division is staffed by one person that operates the equipment and clears the sites. It's in the public works department, and that person basically supports the other public works divisions when they're not doing demolitions. So, that's, I don't know what that person does specifically, probably more water sewer work, Jimmy. So, not directly kind of neighborhood revitalization stuff, but supporting the, supporting the staff in other ways too. We did start having some conversations a few months ago about whether we need to still do that in-house versus contract out the demolition, since the numbers are a lot lower. At some point, this was probably 2015, 2016, we, we, we said that we need about 30 to 35 demolitions to kind of break even as far as contract versus in-house model. So, we're, we're kind of hovering right around there, and we'll continue to look at that. But right now, that person can also support our public works divisions when they're not doing demolitions. And that equipment doesn't really sit idle when there's not demolitions, so. Does that answer your question?
Sure. Robert, you know, high grass is your number one, is your, your number one violation. Do you see, do you see that people are responsive to the violations? Or are you, are you putting lots of mowing liens on property and we have to mow it?
So, we, we have a budget for forced mowing of, I think it's 42,000. I think last year, it went all the way up to closer to 50. So, we're mowing a lot of yards that I wish we didn't have to. So, yes, we're filing a lot of liens. We, you know, we had a lot more liens paid recently too, though. And I think as neighborhoods continue to get built out and those vacant lots that have sat for years, that the city was having to mow them, get bought by developers to build these houses. I, hopefully, that will start trending downward on the number of vacant properties and such. So, yes, we file a lot of liens, unfortunately.
New on mowing liens being paid off has gone up substantially since property, the, the real estate market's just turning over a lot more property now. I think our, you know, we're $35,000, $40,000 a year, maybe, in mowing liens being paid off, so.
You've seen that this year?
Yeah, and it's, it's gone up substantially over the last five years, for sure.
I wanna say that this year-to-date, I think it's, we brought, generated like 36,000 already. Are we the numbers right?
So, those get paid at closing, right?
Yeah, well, most of the time.
Surprise!
Surprise, exactly. Yep.
Robert, thank you. Your, your team's doing a great job, and we do appreciate it, you know? Code compliance, see, I'm learning, Robert, I'm getting away from that. Code compliance is really important to this council, and so, so we appreciate all the work that you and your team are doing to make that happen.
In your booklet, we're gonna skip over the, the next slides are for the CARES Act, which we covered at the beginning of the meeting. So, if you flip to page 93, I'll provide a couple other updates for you on on our D3 project. Designing Downtown Dennison. I know we've talked a lot about this, so some of this will look familiar, but we did have our kickoff meeting with Piazza Construction. I guess that's been two weeks ago now, almost two weeks ago. So, this is the, the timeline you see up here is what Piazza Construction provided us. And basically, you know, they're gonna do some back-and-forth budgeting, work with the designers, and eventually get to a guaranteed maximum price, probably about the end of September and beginning of October. So, that's really when we'll have to say, okay, we're gonna pull the trigger and, and move to construction. In reviewing the, the numbers, in TERS number three, and I, I, I just plugged in the recently updated central appraisal district values for TERS 3, which came out a few days ago, and it went down about a million, the value did. Lots of appeals, you know, coming through, so these numbers will change. But let me just kind of walk you through how we got there. So, on the, on the far-right-hand side of this slide is, is basically the budget for Phase 1. Design and project management, 1.3 million, construction, these are tool design groups' numbers. Piazza hasn't budgeted theirs yet, or estimated theirs yet. About 12 million, construction manager risk fees, 1.2 million, so we're about 14.4. We had committed earlier about $2 million from water sewer CIP from, for some additional water sewer and drainage improvements. And then, value engineering so far is about 172,000. So, you end up with what we need to bond for, which is 12.25. I hope that number's gonna come down as we get further into value engineering and working through budgeting with Piazza. That was the, really the goal of bringing them onboard. But using that number, that 12.2, you put a 3% rate on it for 20 years, you end up with an annual payment of 815,000. So, on the left now, you, you plug that into our TERS model, which has on the far-right-hand side, the fund balance in the, in the TIF, or the TERS. And then, those payments would kick in in fiscal '22. This is assuming we would issue bonds around the first of next year. So, payments would be due in fiscal '22, and the numbers look good. Now, this, this, again, there's a lot of assumptions in here. The biggest concern is that we're not gonna see the property values in the next few years go up like they have before. So, I think the biggest risk we run with, with that is that it's more gonna push effect Phase 2 and the timing of Phase 2 than paying for Phase 1. I feel confident that we can move ahead with, with Phase 1. If the values don't increase like they will, or like they're projected to for the next two, three, four years, that's really just gonna push Phase 2 out for us. So, while we remain hopeful and are still seeing a lot of business, business move downtown and improvements made and, and value coming to the TERS, we did have, you know, we projected in some increases there, and, and hopefully, that works out. But the economy could, could change that. So, all that to say that, you know, we're gonna keep working with Piazza over the next couple months and get, get more refined numbers, you know, get some better estimates on our interest rates and shore up these, these, shore up the numbers. Come September and October, when we need to pull the trigger, we'll have a, have a more comfort level moving forward. But I, what I'm seeing now, I feel good with Phase 1. I think Phase 2, if anything, would have to get pushed out if, if the values don't come in as, as projected there. Yeah, I think that's, anything on TERS 3 or D3 project? We've talked a lot about it recently, so that's really just a quick update on that. Let's talk about Dennison Forward. So, you know, one of the things that got put on the back burner during COVID was rebuilding, we're rebuilding Main Street, 300 block of Main Street from the fire. So, not a, not a whole lot of updates here as, as things have kind of paused. These are the properties that were impacted from 313 to 323. Some plans have, have changed in the meantime. I, I know that the owners of 315, 317 have hired an architect to start designing the building that's gonna go in that space. So, that's half of the, half of the missing tooth that's there now. The other two are, are gonna be a little bit of struggle. I know the, the Acosta's are, have found another property for Descheneesal, and so, they've indicated they want to continue working with the city to make sure that it does get rebuilt. May not necessarily be them that, that move ahead with it, but they want to find the right person to help with that project and keep it moving forward. So, we did get quite a bit of work done up front before COVID hit. We got the property surveyed, we got the geotech work done, and all the property owners came together to, to kind of pool resources to do that. So, it was a, it was a good effort. But, oh, and the third thing we did was work with the Texas Historical Commission to get some architectural renderings done, just to give us a sort of a target to work towards for filling in the 300 block. So, again, you look at 315, 317, a single, single ownership building there, and then 19 and 21 are two different owners. So, we've kind of picked this back up and are gonna keep working towards getting that, getting that block rebuilt. In the meantime, I know I talked to our parks folks recently, and we're gonna see what we can do to stabilize the site a little bit more. It's getting a little weedy and unsightly, so the city may need to step in and help out and coordinate some effort to get some filled dirt in there and maybe sod it, put some grass down. So, at least it's, at least it looks a little better than it does now.
Is there any chance we can paint the sides of the buildings?
That's on the list as well. Yeah, paint and clean up. You know, Robert, that just presented, talked about how much difference paint can make, and it really would on the sides of those facades, so. Yeah, we'll work with them on that as well.
And 313 is, is nearing occupancy, but their, their recovery is just about over, and Sparrow Galleries is going in there.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's not too far off, so, so that's great. I think that's moving along more quickly than they actually anticipated that it was going to.
Yeah, yep. Cross-development that has 323 and also the Dennison Hotel also kind of hit paused on those project, or hit pause on those projects for a, for a short, short time during the pandemic. So, we expect those to pick back up when, when things get roaring again.
Would those improvements to those lots be billed against the owners? Like, if we sod it and filled dirt?
Yeah, that's the hope, is that we can pool resources again, and, you know, maybe the city does the work and we get reimbursed through them. I don't, you know, I don't think it's gonna take too much to get that done. But they've been, for the most part, with the exception of one owner, it's been good to work with, with the folks there, for sure.
I don't know about anybody else, but it seems a lifetime ago since that fire.
Feels like five years ago.
Yeah, it does feel that way. Okay.
All right, lunch break, we get second lunch. I think the food's gone, though, sorry. All right, so we're gonna transition to some development priorities here. You know, reflecting on the citizen survey and, and some of the responses we got there, obviously, folks are concerned about the future of Dennison and the, and the growth of Dennison when it, when it comes to our economy, being able to sort of manage growth and upsize our infrastructure to accommodate growth. So, in, in considering those efforts for the last, really the last six months, we've started diving into the opportunity to create another tax increment reinvestment zone that will help the city prepare for growth, especially along the 75 corridor and south and west of Dennison. So, I wanna kind of give you a high-level overview of what that looks like. Some of the needs that exist out there, one is that we need more building lots. We have a lot of infill lots that are being developed, but outside of really our core established neighborhoods and Gateway Village, we don't have a lot of new subdivisions being developed. Now, there's a few, few reasons for that. One of them is that some of our properties are not near utilities. Some are, potentially have drainage issues or topography issues, especially in our new growth areas, southwest Dennison, anything that drains to Iron Ore Creek. There's a lot of heavily wooded property, a lot of ups and downs on the property that make it difficult and expensive to develop. While we have a lot of excellent quality builders in Dennison, we really don't have anybody that develops land, meaning they go in and put the infrastructure in place and then sell the lots off. Again, outside of Gateway Village, that's just not happening much. And so, we need a, we need a mechanism in place, not only to help fund the public improvements that a developer would need to put in to create more building lots, but also the sort of off-site improvements that need to be developed by the city to spur development. In addition to that, so, as you know, 75, the Gap construction project is moving forward in Sherman in addition to the improvements at the 82 interchange, 75 and 82 interchange. TechDOT has plans to improve 75, improve and widen 75 all the way up through Dennison as well. And while that's gonna be, you know, maybe five, 10 years off, what's gonna be asked of the city is to provide some matching funds for that project. Sherman had to spend, I think, upwards of $3 million to help match, and that was only a 5% match for the, the 75 projects through, through Sherman. TechDOT's requiring at least 5% recently on projects for the Ramp Reversal Project at 691, that's under construction right now. We had to put in 5% for that. If you look at what really needs to be done to 75 through Dennison, 5% is gonna be a big number for us down the road. And so, we need a, we need a pot of money that's gonna be ready to go when TechDOT says, hey, we're ready to widen 75 through Dennison. And so, a TERS could be the mechanism for that. Obviously, we want to encourage high-quality development in Dennison. And so, if we're able to offer some kind of carrot for developers to come in and assist them with putting in the infrastructure, on the backside of that is gonna mean that we get higher-quality growth in terms of what, what that housing and, and development looks like. The good news is, there's tools available, the tax increment reinvestment zone is one of those tools. So, again, generally, how that works, and this would be specific for how we would structure TERS number 4. So, as we get property tax revenue, that really goes into two places, either into a maintenance and operation portion or the interest and sinking fund portion. When you create a TERS, a percentage of the M&amp;O revenue is put into the, into a TERS. And it's different for all of our, our TERS districts. The first one, Gateway Village, that's a 40% contribution from the maintenance and operation portion of our property tax revenue. Downtown, we did 75%, because it's mostly already built out, and there's not a lot of new services that we're gonna have to provide in the downtown area, so that was a higher percentage. The other money that comes into the TIF is from the county contribution. So, the county has contributed to all of our tax increment reinvestment zones so far, different, differing amounts. But it's, it's almost like a matching grant if we're able to get participation from the county to supplement what the city is setting aside into the tax increment fund as well. Now, from that pot of, of tax increment funds, how we would establish TERS 4 is we'd basically have a bucket for developers and a bucket for the city. And we'd be able to, with, through development agreements, be able to tweak what that, what that balance looks like. For example, on a, you know, maybe a 20 or 30 or 40-acre parcel or development that's just gonna be single-family homes, the city's really not gonna have to do a lot of off-site improvements or bring new roads to develop that parcel. But if there is a need for the city to really keep a pot of money for infrastructure that we would, that we would develop, such as off-site utility connections, that sort of thing, we'd wanna, wanna tweak what that development agreement looks like. But in general, we need two buckets of money, one to offer to developers for incentives and one for the city to cover the costs associated with, with infrastructure. Again, kind of honing in on southwest Dennison, which is where we're growing, what we could do with the city bucket of money is improve arterial and collector streets that would serve wider areas. And the example that I kind of show on here is, if you look at the area south of Lloyd Lake Road and west of Park Avenue, a lot of undeveloped land back there next to established neighborhoods. There's really not a collector street that runs north and south or east and west that has been built through there, but there's gonna need to be one to handle the traffic for future growth. And so, with our bucket of money, we could partner with a developer to go in, build the streets, the collector streets necessary to serve the wider area, bring utilities to that area, and suddenly, you partner that with a bucket of money that you can offer to developers to develop the land. Suddenly, that land becomes more attractive from a development standpoint, and we can, we can start to get some more building lots going. So, the other example here is the, the Spur 503 interchange with 75. When 75 does get rebuilt through Dennison, we've worked with TechDOT to turn that interchange into a more traditional interchange. So, basically, making it more like Morton Street or Lloyd Lake Road, a regular interchange instead of flyover ramps where you can't have commercial development at the intersections. So, if we're able to knock that intersection down, what would happen is Spur 503 would actually connect up with Gateway Boulevard north of THF Park and create a, you know, four retail corners for development. That project alone, last I, last TechDOT had estimated it was close to $25 million. And again, so you talk about a 5% match on the city's part, and that's a, you know, 1.25 million. It's not a little bit of money, we need to start accumulating some buckets of money there to put into these projects so that, so the city can continue to grow its revenue. So, just a few examples, another, another big need in this area is regional stormwater detention. One of the hindrances of development naturally is what do you do with stormwater? I know our developers don't like to set aside land that could otherwise be sold for lots for stormwater detention. But if we're gonna have quality development, we really need to have, we really need to take care of stormwater. We're dealing with, you know, 60, 70 years of housing that's been built in Dennison that doesn't have that, and we see how that impacts neighborhoods that just can't handle heavy rains that come in. So, we want to plan out accordingly. That's really best accomplished through regional stormwater management. So, instead of each developer with a 20 and 30-acre piece doing their own onsite So, instead of each developer with a twenty and thirty acre piece doing their own onsite storage, uh, we go look at the whole watershed and figure out where best to put a regional detention pond and build and develop that, and then each developer can kind of contribute to the cost of that. Um, we just need the money and, and, uh, designs upfront to make that happen. So, uh, that's an opportunity. Uh, we have a, you know, great desire to continue to develop the city's trail network, parks and trails network. Um, TERS money can go towards that as well. And, um, even as we get more grants from Tech Dot for the Katy Trail, uh, we will need money to go towards our match for those, uh, for those grants as well. So, uh, the TERS provides an opportunity. Uh, so in general, that's kind of what we're, what we're looking at with, with TERS number four. Um, as we continue to have, uh, discussions and move in the direction of bringing more land into Dennison in south, in the southwestern portion, we would wanna include that in this area too. But in general, kind of the area we're targeting is the seventy-five corridor, uh, what we call the Teresa Drive Donut Hole, and then really everything over from seventy-five to one thirty-one. Uh, any vacant land in there is what we're trying to assemble into this, this TERS number four. And if you think TERS number three boundary looks funny, this one's gonna look really funny and probably have some islands just all around the city with vacant land that we need to help develop. So, um, a lot of information I know, and we still have some, some work to do. We're working closely with Tony and William over at DDA to make sure that, um, they're on board with this and, and that they're kind of giving some input, cause, uh, they're out trying to market the seventy-five corridor, and, um, as we do that, utilities continually come up as, oh, we need to bring the water line up a little bit further or the sewer line down, down here, and this gives us a funding mechanism to make that happen. So, um, I'll kind of pause there and see if you have any questions. This is something, uh, we wanna try to do before the end of the year. When you create a TERS, uh, it's basically a one-year lookback, um, when you create your base value. So, if we create it before December thirty-first, um, the tax, the tax value that applies is actually twenty nineteen's value. So, we, again, capture a little bit of growth immediately off the bat because land values are going up in, in Dennison. So, we start off with some, with some opportunity there. All right, it is Betty's opportunity now. She's gonna talk about a renovation incentive program that's been in place for a couple of years now, and then also, um, a possible update to our building code.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. Wanted to give you a little update on, uh-oh, not on TERS four. Can't help you with that one. On our renovation program. This is a graph showing how many, uh, year-by-year numbers were in the program with two thousand eighteen, um, actually having the most. We have a total of a hundred and nineteen in the program. And currently, um, with, we have sixteen right now, so we're on track to be the same really as we were at this si- same time last year. Okay, so we have fifty-eight completed projects, and we've paid out eleven of those for a total of fifty thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. The payouts were, so there's, there's been fifty-eight completed and eleven paid out, and that's because of how the three eighty agreement is written. So, it's a year after they complete their permit, like they get their final inspection. So, let's just say they got their final inspection of July of nineteen. Then it's a full year after that before they're eligible. So, that would be July of two thousand twenty. So, they wouldn't actually, uh, apply to us until January of twenty-one, uh, to receive the tax for, uh, twenty. And, um, the average, uh, property valuation increase on these properties is running around sixty-nine thousand dollars. So, that's a really good increase for appraised, just, for the, uh, appraised value. Uh, we have twenty-four projects that are set to receive, uh, their incentive rebates in, uh, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, we've had thirty-three remodels dropped from the program due to no inspections, letting their permits expire. I don't know why someone would do that, to not follow through with the, with the program, but we do have thirty-three that have let their permits expire without getting their building finals.
So, so Betty, are those thirty-three included in the one nineteen? Or, or that's, it's included in that one nineteen?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. It's included. Yes, it is. And the data through May of two thousand twenty, we have sixteen projects this year with the permit value, uh, running between forty-five and ninety-eight, uh, thousand for their value of work that they plan on doing. So, these are some pictures of some of the renovations that have taken place, and this is, this is one of my favorite houses, uh, for what they've done with this. This, this house has been a code compliance nightmare since I've been with the city. Uh, it was always a rent house. It wasn't, no one ever took care of it. Uh, I think the first time that it had, actually had something done to it was in two thousand and sixteen, and they did maybe just a little bit of leveling, and then they sold it to the people that really did the remodel on it. So, but I wanted to tell you, in two thousand and seventeen, this house had an appraised value at the appraisal district of twenty-four thousand, four seventy-five. And then after they did their renovation on it, in two thousand twenty, the appraised value on this house is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand and six eighty-four. So, that's, um, that's, that's pretty awesome. So, cause this house could have easily been put on the demolition list. So, it's really good. And this little house, they've, uh, they've really nicely updated this house. Um, change in the porch configuration did a lot for this house, I think. This one, it did increase in value. Uh, it was on the nineteen roll as fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and nine, and two thousand twenty, it's up to eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred. So, that's a significant increase as well. This is another one. This house could have easily have been on the demolition list. It sat empty for a long time. It was grown up. Weeds, vines grown on the house over the years. So, um, this after picture, this house looks great, and there's several brand-new houses that sit right next to this house. So, when you drive down East Acheson Street, um, this house just blends right in with all the other little hu- new houses that have been built over there. So, this one jumped, there was no appraised value for this house prior to, uh, two thousand nineteen at the appraisal district. So, in two thousand nineteen, it was around thirty-five thousand, and in two thousand twenty, it's on the roll for, uh, a little over fifty-three thousand. And this is another, um, awesome job, and this also, as you can see, could have easily been on the demolition list. It sat empty for years as well. This is on the corner of Armstrong and Bond. But in two thousand and seventeen, uh, it was on, at the appraisal district for forty-two thousand, two forty-three. And in two thousand twenty, it's a hundred and ten thousand. So, that's another big jump, and a, and it looks beautiful. So, and that is the end of the house pictures, but do y'all have any questions about the renovation program? It's, it's been very successful. It's a great program. So, it's made a lot of difference in the houses. So...
Yeah, we, we'd like to keep it going. Sorry to, um, interrupt. We wanna keep it going. We initially talked about, um, setting aside a pool of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in incentives to go towards it. Obviously, we're not anywhere close to that yet, so we're gonna keep, keep it going, um, and we'll keep you guys updated on it as well. But, uh, it's been a, been a good program for sure.
Well, it's, it's certainly one of my favorite programs. You know, the video when, when it was put out made me wanna renovate a house and buy a red couch.
I know.
Maybe we need to update that video and get more people excited about, about renovating. But, uh, you know, Judd, I, I talk about demolition, uh, could have been a de- demolition casualty, and now it's a neighborhood treasure.
Mm-hmm.
So, and all of those certainly look like neighborhood treasures.
Yes, they, they do.
Thank you, Betty.
You're welcome. Okay, so now for the fun stuff. Um, this is, I wanna talk to you about updating our existing building codes. Um, we are, we're two code cycles behind. Uh, first, I wanna tell you, this is the International Code Council's library of code books. We use nine of these code books plus the National Electrical Code, which is not under the umbrella of the International Code Council. It's under the NFPA, which is a lot of the fire department's code books. I do wanna tell you that because we are two code cycles behind, there will be a whole lot of changes from twelve to eighteen because we missed a whole code cycle, which was two thousand fifteen. Um, I can't tell you what all of those changes are until we really get into it, but I haven't seen, um, anything yet that's, uh, going to really affect our residential building. I want to stay with the two thousand and fifteen energy code because that is what the state's under, and, uh, they're gonna change again in twenty-one, so I just prefer to wait till twenty-one to change the energy code because it will be stricter. It's stricter in eighteen, and I think that fifteen is, uh, a really good code as it stands. So, uh, also with the, uh, National Electrical Code, we're under the two thousand seventeen, and it changes every three years as well, which it's changed this year. Uh, it's not out yet, but, um, I would just, I wanna just stay with that one until, um, the next cycle for the electrical code to change. So... But building codes ensure structural integrity, electrical, plumbing, and mechanical system safety, while also protecting structures from fire and other natural disasters. Uh, they also address many of society's most important concerns, such as public health, safety, and environmental protection. Uh, these, the building codes establish a build, a building's quality, structural integrity, and energy performance for years to come, which will determine and save on operational and maintenance costs for the life of the building, which, that goes back to our energy code and, um, how much money it saves people now to, to build under that energy code, uh, in their heating and air. Uh, it's a, it's a tremendous savings for them. We feel like that, you know, we would just be moving forward as well if we move forward with the current building codes. Based on, uh, studies from the International Code Council, uh, on states and cities across the nation, the in, adoption and enforcement of up-to-date building codes increase resilience to disasters and reduce the long-term risk of loss of life, injury, damage to, and loss of pro- of property. I've already talked about that we're two, two code cycles behind on changing codes, and that not all the code sections changed in two thousand and eighteen. They did a lot of cleaning up on code sections. Um, I know y'all might find this hard to believe, but sometimes interpreting a code section is, is difficult. So, we do even have other books where we go to reference to find out what a code is actually talking about. So, some of two thousand and eighteen has kind of cleared up some of those, um, codes where they, they are difficult to understand. And another thing, the, uh, Code Council no longer will allow us to take certification exams based on the two thousand and twelve code. So, now they're, they're just considered outdated, the two thousand and twelve are. So, uh, if we want to take exams, then we'll have to purchase books anyway. So, I did pull a couple of changes out, um, to go over with you of where they're going with these. So, carbon monoxide alarms, you know, as y'all know, they're, they're required, uh, in houses. Uh, if you've got, uh, gas appliances or if you have an attached garage. So, currently, you, they can just be battery-operated, and you just stick it right outside of the bedrooms. That's the only place that it's required to be. So, moving forward in the two thousand and eighteen, they are going to be required to be interconnected, just like your smoke alarms are. They're, they're wired together, so that when one goes off, they all go off. And, uh, they can use a combination of electrical and CO alarm, um, if they want to, or they can just leave them separate, two separate devices, but both be interconnected. Also, I put a picture here. This is a dryer exhaust, which a lot of you don't see because it's behind your wall through your attic, but you don't really think about it. But when these get installed, what people do to try to make them fit in the framing, they, they smash them, they bend them, they crunch them to fit, to get them to fit in inside the, inside the walls and up through the, the wall, through the, uh, through the attic. So, they actually had to write a code that says you can't do that. So, stop doing it. And so, how, I think how this came about is people were doing it, and they were, they, this is a red tag issue when you do it. And they were getting, um, a lot of fights over that because it's not written in the code that you can't squash it or smash it. So, they had to write a code that said you can't do that. So, I'm glad it's in there because it is definitely, um, it definitely goes on. We write red text for that ourselves. And this is also, this is also a residential one. So, currently, your garage doesn't have to have it, its own electrical circuit, so it can be tied to any circuit in your house, which means it could even be tied to one of the circuits in your kitchen. So, if you're using a lot of appliances in your kitchen, and then you're in the garage plugging in a lot of stuff and small tools and whatever else you have out there in your garage, then you're gonna contin- continually be tripping breakers. So, they also, they finally wrote a code where you actually do have to have your own, an own separate circuit for a garage, which is a really smart thing to do. I'm glad they finally did that. So, and this, this other one is, right now, your air conditioning and heating ducts that run through your attic are strapped. They're normally strapped, um, to your rafters, and the strapping's about every four foot. So, if you haven't ever really looked at it, um, you'll find and see where, wherever the straps are, your duck work is squeezed a little, and so, and it's bent a little. So, all of that restricts your airflow. Sometimes it is restricted so much that it cuts off the airflow completely, which is, of course, another red tag. And, um, what the code allows now, which they never allowed in, in the past, was all this duck work now can be laid on the ceiling rafters, you know, that are in the attic. So, it can be laid across the ceiling rafters, and when you spray in insulation, it covers your duck work, which makes perfect sense because now it even has more insulation on it. So, it's a lot easier to cool, uh, because it's insulated. And your attic's probably a hundred and twenty degrees in the summer, if not more. And this is really, helps with the energy efficiency and cooling of your, of your air. So, that was really a good move, and I was glad to see that. This next one is just, I wanted to kind of just let you know that the occupancy loads will be changing a little bit on some of our businesses. And this explanation here, I apologize for it's not real clear. But, um, what it does, it's going to reduce, um, if you have a business, like this is, City Hall's a business, occupancy load. They're going to increase the factor that you use to multiply your square footage by increase the factor that you use to multiply your square footage by, by 50. So if it was 100, we used a factor of 100, so let's just use 5,000 square feet. So that left us with 50, you could get 50 people in an area with, that was 5,000 square feet. So now they've changed it to, to use a dividing factor of 150. So in that 5,000 square feet now, you can have 33 people in there instead of the 50. And the one, the next one that I have listed here is a mercantile, which the previous dividing factor was 30. So if you take that same 5,000 square feet and you use your occupant load factor of 30, then you can put 166 people in the 5,000 square foot area. And now they've changed it from 30 to 60. And when you divide that into your 5,000, then you can put 83 people in 5,000 square feet. So I don't know about y'all, but I feel a lot more comfortable being in 5,000 square feet with 83 people than I do with 166. So the code was very generous on occupancy load, which is really a life safety issue and that's why they changed this. They, they were just allowing too many people to be in a space that wasn't big enough to, to hold all those people. It does, doesn't it? So, I know, I know, really, we talked about this. Yeah, we talked about this in the office, that this was like, I wonder if they knew that the pandemic was coming when they were writing these codes, so.
Betty, could I ask a question? So that, that applies to any kind of business?
Well, if it's a business classification, like we're an office here, so, you know, in this building. So it's, it's, it's a business occupancy load.
Okay, so a restaurant is considered a business?
Mm-mm.
No, it's not considered a business.
No, they're, they're, they're an assembly. So they're, they're a different, different factor.
So it's okay for their numbers to be unsafe, huh?
No. I guess so. I guess it is. You got a point there, so. Well, it did not change the, the factors, the dividing factor. Mm-mm. So, no. Mm-hmm. That's, that's right. So this next one is, this is a, this will be a commercial change. But this is a rooftop and I picked this because when I saw this picture, I could see the Dennison Hotel's roof. And I thought this, that this just looked awesome. Now, I, I hope they do something like this. Their building will be completely sprinkled, so they'll be fine to do that. But it is a change that they made, that any of these commercial businesses that want to have a rooftop bar or restaurant and have an occupant load up there of 100 or more, then their whole building will have to be sprinkled in order to do that. So, but, but this was just a, this was just a neat one for the Dennison Hotel to, to kind of look at and see it happening like that. So, so do y'all have any, any questions?
I just have one, Betty.
Okay.
Are you preparing the builders for the changes in 2021? Because they are not going to be happy. So you need to start preparing them now.
For that, for the Energy Code or for, yes, I know.
Yeah, and actually when we adopted the Energy Code, that was a good, a couple of good examples for us. One is that we as a city can, if there are provisions in the codes that we don't like because they really are hindering, hindrance as far as being able to keep this in the board, we can pull them out. We did that with the Energy Code. We ended up pulling out a couple of sections, reducing certain factors, that sort of thing. The other thing is, yeah, we did a whole lot of educating with that.
We did.
We'll want to do that, of course, with the 2018 changes as well, to make sure that we keep us informed of what's going on. Betty was right that we've still got to dig in and really figure out exactly what the major changes are. She's touched on, I think, some important ones, but we've developed really good relationships with our builders and we want to maintain that and help keep them forefront of knowing what requirements are.
We plan on, as we move forward with this, because we have a lot of education that we need to get as well on this. So they offer many webinars and so the building department as a group will, will do that and go through it. And then we'll also bring in some of the builders and discuss these changes with them so that they also know because we, we need them out there helping us, you know, spread the word and to understand these codes like we understand them. So we will be involving them on that.
Yeah, we've got some very entrepreneurial builders. One of them, after we implemented the Energy Code, actually started his own energy inspection company to serve the local community because you have to go down to Metroplex, I think, to get somebody to come back.
Yes.
Like your H-backs. I can't speak to them like she better care.
You sound great. You want to, you need a job in the building department.
Well, compliance is going to be a lot less painful if they're involved upfront before it becomes, before it becomes a reality.
Absolutely.
And they, they feel like that they've had input into the change because otherwise they're, they're going to dig their heels in, just like they did on the last one.
Well, we plan to involve them. We certainly do, so. Is there anything else?
Thank you, Betty.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So we're kind of bringing up the tail end of this thing now. I'm going to talk about parks and recreation a little bit. I want to preface what Justin's going to dig into in more detail, just with a kind of 30,000-foot view of opportunities that exist here in Dennison. As Sunny talked about, the citizen survey, you know, one of the things that really stood out to me is that we have citizens who are interested in health and wellness. And when we, this was probably two or three years ago, we, of course, started developing Texoma Health Foundation Park and, and the usage out there has been tremendous and we're excited about that. At that same time, we also developed and built, we brought in a contractor that put in about five miles worth of hike and bike trails at Waterloo Park. And I spent a lot of time at Waterloo. Our family tradition on Sunday is to go to Waterloo and walk around those five miles of trails. And every Sunday I'm out there, when the weather's good, you see bikers, mountain bikers out there. And so I started talking to some of them as they were unloading and unloading their bikes. And most of them are coming out of the Metroplex. They, they know now that Waterloo has enough trails for them to come for an afternoon and, and, and really be able to recreate and have a good time. Some of them go downtown afterwards and, and go get a bite, bite of food before they head home. And so I think that really taught us that there's, Dennison has a tremendous opportunity to further develop our outdoor recreation industry. And, and so I've kind of coined this idea of, well, we, you know, we talk about moving forward all the time, but the motto, the part of our motto that we miss sometimes is the kicking back part. Kicking back, so moving forward with kicking back is, is kind of what I want to talk about. So, you know, there is a, there is a strong movement really worldwide in the outdoor recreation industry. And I'll show some numbers here in a minute, but there's, it's almost a billion, or sorry, a trillion-dollar industry just here in the United States. The 2017 numbers, I think it was about 850 million, or 850, I better make sure I get my numbers right. 887 billion. So yeah, it's almost a trillion-dollar industry now. But, so what makes, what, what really positions Dennison well for helping to develop this experience and outdoor recreation economy is a couple of different factors. One is that we have a, we have a historic downtown that is going to be an authentic, creative, amazing place for people to, to come to. And, and it already is, it's already a magnet. But how can we draw more people here and further develop what we're, what we're investing so much in, which is Main Street? And the answer is our natural environment. Dennison, even, even compared to areas around us, has a very unique natural environment. We have multiple lakes. Of course, we have Lake Texoma, a huge draw, and there's a lot of outdoor recreation that already takes place there. But we have Loy Lake, we have Waterloo Lake, Randell. We have a lot of water resources that, that people can use. We also have a lot of just natural topography that is very unique to our area and provides some, some really awesome opportunities for outdoor recreation. So you kind of throw all those things together and, and we've got a great opportunity in front of us. I copied this from the Outdoor Recreation Association of America's website. These are 2017 numbers, just kind of a real high-level view of what the outdoor recreation industry looks like. It's a 887-billion-dollar industry, lots of jobs, lots of tax revenue that's generated off of it. And I'm sure you guys have been to communities in other states or maybe in Texas as well that are really focused around outdoor recreation. But they're focused mostly in the, in the mountain states. The western states obviously, obviously have a lot of outdoor recreation opportunities. But I don't think that, that should downplay what opportunities we have here in, in Dennison. You know, I mentioned about some of the hike and bike trails that we've put in at Waterloo Lake. What makes Dennison unique is that we, we have this opportunity to draw people downtown from all of the natural outdoor recreation opportunities all around. And what makes Dennison unique, this is, I had our GIS analyst pull some data for us as far as, all right, what are the high and low points in, in, in Dennison? 920 feet is our high elevation and that's out near, on the way to Pottsboro, near, I'm trying to think of that development now. John Galding's place that, yeah, Summit Oaks. So Summit Oaks is kind of the high point out there, 920 feet, right next to the Red River, we're at about 500 feet. That's a substantial difference when you're talking about elevation. Now, if you're in Colorado and you're talking about, you know, 12,000 feet down to 8,000 feet, no, it's not that, not that big elevation change. But there is some significant topography in Dennison that provides some great opportunity. And just even from downtown to Waterloo Lake, you've got quite a bit of elevation drop that, that really provides some neat terrain for those that are looking to recreate outdoors. The other thing we have is that in those, in those, we have these natural corridors that lead to downtown that are heavily wooded. There's either, they're natural drainage areas. They're never, they're really not developable because of the terrain, and so what do we do with them? Well, let's develop them into hike and bike trails and other corridors to get people from our lakes to downtown or other, other nodes down, other nodes to downtown as well. So lots of opportunities there. If you think about what we're doing with the Katy Trail, it really serves as a backbone to connect people from north and south and then east and west along these greenway corridors that lead to and from downtown. I went and hiked one of these that goes from, I don't know, yeah, the laser's not going to show. Anyways, it goes from near the intersection of Maurice and I guess it's Bullock or Brock. I never know what to call it. Right there by Waterloo Pool, there's a greenway that connects, connects there and goes all the way to Armstrong Avenue. And so you have, you know, you've got almost a mile stretch of just greenway. When you walk through there, it's like you're not even in Dennison. I mean, you can't see any houses around you. There's kind of cliffs on either side. It's just such a unique terrain that there's just so many opportunities there for us to develop those into these connector trails that lead to downtown. And then, of course, we have a really good gridded network of streets that really lends itself to connecting people on bikes or walking to downtown as well. So with that, one, Justin's going to talk here in a little bit about a master planning effort for us to, to help really lay out what we want to do with, with parks and trails and, and outdoor recreation opportunities. We can, we, we'd like to pursue a master plan for helping us lay out where all these connections are going to be. I mean, I can throw, you know, nice lines on a PowerPoint presentation, but we need some, we need some research to back that up. We need some more specific planning documents to help lay out what's going to happen. So he's going to visit about that, but I did want to take just a minute and update you on the status of the Katy Trail. We know kind of what our vision is for the Katy Trail, but there's a lot of different moving pieces associated with it. And so just want to break those down real quick. Phase one, which is the part that goes from Day Street to Loy Lake Road. This is already funded. It's under construction to be a 12-foot wide paved trail. We are hearing from the contractor that that's going to be finished in September of this year, September 2020. So that's about a mile stretch that's going to be completed. On the north end of that, there's an opportunity for us to connect the trailhead at Day Street to the neighborhoods around there. And so we're, Public Works is looking at using some of our sidewalk funds to connect those neighborhoods and really make it so it's safe. Day Street's a pretty narrow road. We want to make sure people can get to and from the trailhead pretty safely. And then extending up to Crawford Street, we need to acquire some additional right-of-way to get the trail up to Crawford Street. And so our, our Parks team is doing some research on that and looking for, looking for opportunities there. So moving south on Loy Lake Road South, as part of the, the Phase Two Teresa Waterline Project, we are building an aerial water line and pedestrian bridge over Loy Lake Road. As you heard Jimmy explain, that project is out to bid. We'll get the bids next week. And in 2021, that, that bridge will be finished. And so from Loy Lake, instead of stopping there, you're going to be able to continue over Loy Lake Road. And the, the dotted yellow line on here is kind of what we're calling Phase Two. And that's the area that encompasses from Loy Lake Road all the way down to Park Avenue and Teresa Drive, where those two streets intersect. Our plan is to create a natural surface on that, on that trail corridor after the water line is all installed in 2021. Come in with a natural surface and at some point, we hope to be able to develop that into a 12-foot concrete trail like Phase One as well. We didn't get funding for that through Tech dot this go-around, but we're going to apply again and keep that project moving ahead. But in the meantime, we can still create a natural surface trail to go on. There are two bridge crossings that are necessary to keep the trail connected in that area, one over Deer Run and one over Iron Ore Creek. The Deer Run Bridge is, there's a bridge there now that used to carry the railroad, used to carry the train. That bridge is, is good enough in place. We feel like we can modify it, put some handrails on it and decking and, and modify it so it works for pedestrians. The Iron Ore Creek Bridge is going to be a little more tricky. It's flooded out quite a bit and needs to, needs to be stabilized before we start putting people on it. So those, those efforts are underway to keep those developed as well. So obviously we got to cross under Spur 503 with the trail. And Public Works is working with Tech dot on putting in pedestrian crossings on those two frontage roads that'll go across there. So we'll put in the appropriate markings and signage to get people safely across the spur as well, under the bridges that, that go through. You don't actually cross the spur, you go under it, but the frontage roads you'll have to cross. And then Phase Three, which will go from Park Avenue all the way down to 691. There's still some right-of-way we need to acquire there that's unfortunately chopped up into like four or five different ownership groups that have purchased the, the old right-of-way over time. A big portion of it is owned by Covenant Development as part of the Woodlands Place subdivision there with the, with the nursing homes. The developer there is going to dedicate the floodplain and open space to the city and is committed to making, helping us make that trail connection. So that'll be a fairly easy part, but in between there, it's going to just take some additional time to get some right-of-way there. So that's, again, just kind of an update on the Katy Trail. A lot of different components there that I wanted to make sure you guys were in the loop on. We're super excited about it and, and it's going to serve as a tremendous backbone for a trail system in Dennison and really help us set apart ourselves as an outdoor recreation hub for, for North Texas. Any questions on that before I hand it over to Justin? All right. There you go.
Is the mic on?
Yeah.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Very grateful to be here. Judd had mentioned how, how special our area is for so many reasons. And because of my position, I get to hear that often. And the, the really cool thing is because I, I go down every once in a while to the Metroplex area, the extensions of like McKinney. I even get to hear it from old colleagues and friends. There's been times I've worn proudly my Dennison shirt and people have recognized that there's a lot of really cool things going on up here. So we don't take that lightly as a staff and we feel a responsibility that we want to just kind of continue that legacy and quality. Today, I, I get to share with you, kind of go over. to share with you, kind of go over our mission statement in Parks and Recreation, which was there here previously, but I, I do want to kind of reevaluate that again. We're briefly going to go over the Parks and Recreation Fund overview, the Waterloo Trail improvements, and then I'm going to spend most of my time with us seeking to do a Parks and Trails master plan. Judd has mentioned a few occasions that, you know, mission, a vision, values, those are words on paper unless you put them into action. Ours is a little robust, but it does kind of capture the essence of what we're trying to do. Every decision we make, whether it be a service, a hire, enhancing a facility, we weigh it with this statement. So our statement is surpass the expectations of every visitor by providing a once in a lifetime experience every time someone talks to, to staff and visit a Dennison Parks and Recreation facility. We seek to meet the recreational needs of our community regardless of background and capability and reflect the entire wellness paradigm. Getting into our funds, Renee touched on these just a little bit. We have a, a community that is very committed to helping out Parks and Recreation and we're very thankful for that. And fiscal year 20, we had 545,000 of available funds. Being that Waterloo is, you know, a place that we may need to invest big dollars. We decided to let that grow. We did make a fairly large purchase fiscal year 19, which was actually after the budget workshop last year of a heater. So that's not included on here. But we did include our budget transfer of, just to cover operational costs. Our projected revenues are about 305,000, which will leave us available for fiscal year 21, 590,000. This will be a fun slide to talk about. Our general fund, we had available 265,000. We had budgeted expensive of the expenses of the inclusive play equipment, the Katy Trail repayment, and then we have some available for the, just general park improvements. The inclusive play equipment is one of those things also weighing it with our statement. It's very important for us to be inclusive of all physical backgrounds or abilities, I should say. We have, since opening from COVID, the equipment has been opened up excluding one piece that you would have to essentially call of, just for safety reasons. But you notice there's a lot of play on this already. And we look forward to introducing it during our next birthday bash. We'll, we'll actually officially unveil the equipment. Getting into our projected revenues, we, we do expect to have 129,000 coming in or just about with available funds of 180,000. I did want to note, once again, after the budget workshop last year, we were still in fiscal year 19. We made two purchases that were of importance, one being RTHF Soccer Screen, which expands the green area just south of the soccer fields or multipurpose fields. And we, we've got a lot of really great feedback regarding that from our community. With TSA and other organizations being a huge partner with us, it's made a big difference for safety with balls not going back in those, those areas. Our concessions trailer has been a hit. We, we were servicing a lot of events and our community and it's, it's been really great. We look forward to continuing to do that. Obviously, we had to, to stop that for some time. The Parks and Recreation Waterloo Park Fund, we had available in fiscal year 20, 197,000. We had the budgeted expenses of the Trail Grant match, 100,000. I'm going to talk about that a little bit more in the next slide. The kayak rental station, I will also talk about a little bit more in depth. Our, our fish stocking, I should say, 9,000 throughout the year. And our park art and park improvement programs make up the duration. We are expecting to have about 88,000 come in, which will leave us an available balance of 97,000 projected. You'll notice some of these pictures are actually of our parks, by the way. Those aren't stock photos. We have some, some beautiful parks and we were able to capture that with some professionals this year. So we're excited to get a lot more. I know we've talked about this previously, some slight updates. The trail design is complete for the trail grant. We're seeking to have bids open in July and then hopefully construction, you know, I, I, obviously after it's awarded sometime after. But we had budgeted 200,000 through the grant and then 100,000 being the city match. The kayak rental station, quite a success and it's, it's been used quite often. We had actually projected our monthly revenues to be 2,100, which we were, we were excited about. We felt like that was strong. We, our current actual, just within a month time since we opened, was 3,310. And during that same time, we've actually had more since. But 173 rented. Keep in mind, this is during COVID and this is like our intro month. So we expect that to be a lot more popular and kind of tie into the overall outdoor adventure experience. As we're getting, I'm going to spend most of my time talking about the Parks and Recreation. We are seeking to have a park trail master plan. And just, I wanted to give a quick definition here. A system-wide park master plan is a comprehensive document and process that include an internal assessment, community engagement, resources and data collection, and development of an implementation plan. So this is just kind of taking what is out there in the field and just kind of my, my basic interpretation of what the process is going to look like. With that said, we are seeking a multi-benefit approach for our entire community. We want to ground the process in that it has multi-benefits. And we want to touch what I would like to call the four pillars. So health, economic impact, active transportation, and natural sustainability since we do have a wonderful outdoor platform to work from. This probably goes without saying, just as a reminder, THF Park, for example, the tagline is a place for health and wellness. That's what we want our entire park system to represent and the connecting trail system. There are a tremendous amount of studies. I, I could go through the numbers, but really, when you have open space, walkable areas, there are so many health benefits that do hit the entire wellness paradigm of physically, socially, mentally, emotionally, so on, so forth. And parks are a fundamental component of that. So we would like to use these health outcomes to prioritize our resources and quantify how much our parks plan could help not just impact our community from visitors, but potentially medical savings of the community as well. Economic health is, is another thing. There's a lot of studies that, that tie into parks, trails, tying into the economic health of a community. And this statement, I think, captures that parks are a cornerstone to improving our community's quality of life. I know a lot of people, there's, there's different reasons, a lot of important ones why people move to communities. Parks tends to be one of those reasons. Setting a bold but realistic plan can help entice employers and workers to our city, boost economic development, visitor spending, and increase property values. So a few pictures, I think, that capture this. The, the one on the left is during the Wonders of Winter event. I think we had estimated a crowd size that was coming and going around 3,000. If you remember that event, it was really fun. There was a lot of people and it was really cold and people stayed. So we look at it as kind of like a transition in the sense that, for example, we have development just south of THF Park with some really cool thriving businesses. You have neighborhoods around. The picture to the right shows, you know, like downtown activity. And this is just kind of a, a web of connection and, and things that I think really people thrive in and are seeking. Active transportation is of huge importance. A system-wide park plan can organize the connectivity of trails and open space to ensure there are options for active transportation, as Judd already mentioned. It can build from, or it could be the foundation of your park system and community. So now they're, both pictures of Waterloo. We, we do have a wonderful landscape. We want to take care of it. We want to plan for growth within that landscape. Parks are a critical part of the infrastructure, we believe. A system-wide park plan can prioritize where sustainability practices may have the most benefits centered on health and environmental outcomes as well. Okay, so we looked, there's four steps essentially within the planning process. Right now, we're in the pre, pre-planning process. Before starting the master planning process, you want to establish the foundation for the plan within the vision and mission of our city and Parks and Recreation, which we know where we stand with both. We want to assess our capacity and understand we need to work with the community, y'all elected officials, and others in the development and approval of those plans. Community engagement is going to be huge. We want to work with them in all aspects of the planning process. So everyone has a voice in the decision-making, the data collection, the analysis, and implementation, implementation of that plan, excuse me. We want to create an equitable plan and ensure that the process allows for all groups, diverse groups and communities to participate in the decision-making process. This one's kind of a, a lot of information. Basically, we want to collect as much information as possible, kind of like the community survey. And whether it be the qualitative or quantitative, bring it all together so we have the best plan for our community. We also want to find out where gaps may be. So we, we, we need to know our weaknesses and how to work with those as well. But we do have a lot of strengths. Our implementation is going to be our last step. We want to create a realistic plan based on needs identified and current and future resources, partnership and funding scenarios. If there are anticipated gaps in funding, outline a plan to close the gap and determine how we will prioritize resources in the short term. We have a picture right there. Some of you may know that's, that's John Wooden. This is my last, second to last slide, so I'll give a quick story. He was, I think, 10 years ago voted within ESPN's huge vote as like the greatest coach in the history of all sports, won 12 NCAA championships, coached Hall of Fame players, whatnot. He was known for a lot of things, but one being his strategy and implementation of plans. There's a story of how he used to prepare his teams and starting from like day one, teaching them how to put socks on and put their shoes on appropriately, tie their shoelaces appropriately. And you'd get like these All-Americans coming in like, what is going on here? Like, I'm an All-American. Well, the reasoning behind it is when your socks are on appropriately, your shoes are tied right and in place, you get less blisters, which means less injuries, which means less timeout, which means more shots, which means more comfortability, more efficiency effectiveness. And that's how you win games. So the way I look at it is, you know, with the planning process, we're kind of getting our socks on right, our shoes on. We're getting the right stuff together, planning correctly.
You're in trouble, Justin.
The, the funny thing is I figured you would be the one person who would bring that. I was expecting that when I changed a slide, there'd be a husky at some point. So I appreciate. Lot of overlap, you'll notice. We want to, there's layers to the planning process. We'll probably be able to do a lot of really cool things. We want to really focus on our active transportation. We know it's what the community wants. To this point, we'll continue to gather information and we'll add upon it. But trails in themselves kind of reflect our mission statement, our vision and what the city is trying to do. So the improved health, connectivity, the benefits, well-being and quality of life. With that said, as we add layers, an example of a park where that, that's, has a really cool landscape, there's activity there, but we could probably utilize it better and maximize potential. We need understanding of how to make that work because of the layout. There's no parking, for example, no lighting, no, no restrooms. But Katy Practice Fields would be an example of an enhancement we would want to make. And a planning process would help us, along with other parks, of course. With that said, I'm available for questions, if you guys have any.
When does the pre-planning start?
It started in the sense that just reaching out to various groups and consultants to identify what their processes look like, costs that would be associated. I've, you know, have reviewed a proposal, for example, and obviously things like this. Yeah. I don't, I didn't mention this, but the big thing is we do want to utilize probably some fund money to, to fund this project. So that is my, my thing with moving forward.
That's the ask.
Yes.
Always have money. Well, thank you, Justin. I, I don't think that in general that our community realizes how incredibly blessed we are with the park system that we have in a, in a community our size. It is, you know, not many communities can, can throw up a picture of a beautiful sunset over a bluff in the middle of their city. Now, they just can't. So it's just, so thank you so much.
Thank you all. Was that enough? Do you want more?
Well, let's see. Well, it says additional discussions.
Questions.
Are you leading additional discussion? You have one minute.
Hey, we are, we are. Hey, that was really good. That was timed well, although we pulled a whole bunch out.
Renee will start spitting more formulas at us.
No, just want to express our thanks for the listening ears and the engagement today. We've really appreciated it. As we head into July and August and further develop the budget, really, our, our goal was to arm you with the ability to ask, ask questions and, and dig into the details as we get further into the details with the budget process. So really appreciate your time today and thanks for the support. Look forward to moving ahead on our budget this year.
Well, don't be surprised if you get questions in the future after we've had time to, to absorb all of this.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I know that you are waiting with bated breath about how many times we said COVID or pandemic.
Did you count?
And that was 31 times.
Wow.
And there has to be a first place and that goes to Chief Gudjul.
Anybody say COVID is ruining.
Oh, that's awesome.
Well, thank you again to all the staff for all your hard work. We, you know, we do not take lightly that you do this. not take lightly that you do this so that, that we can be, be informed, so, thank you again, thank you for your hard work, thank you for all that you do, not just for today, but throughout the entire year to make our community such a great place to live. You know, after all, it is the community of choice. So, well, with there being no further business to come before this body, the time is 2:01, and we are adjourned.